West Tennessee Bank's mobile banking puts you in control of your finances like never before. With mobile banking, you can complete routine banking transactions in your living room or halfway around the world. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Lender Member FDIC.
Right now, I'd like to ask for approval of our special call meeting in October.
Motion to approve.
All approve, say aye.
Aye.
Approved amendments. Approved. Next, we'd like to have the quarterly reports and budget amendments. Troy, would you like to be first?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
You go. You have a few weeks to see this. Again, the reporting from Stacey's position, we have changed slightly to reflect more than just what we've been giving you in the past. Before, we've been giving you what we budgeted appropriations for each lineup and what we've been spending. Of course, the accuracy of it is, we felt like it was also necessary to share with you what revenue we were bringing in. Because just because we're looking at the appropriations, we may not have revenue to match it. So we've added the revenue source also along with appropriations and expenditures. So she said you've had it for a few weeks. Again, her office, she's open. If you have any specific questions regarding... But I want to make sure that you recognize that this is going to be the habit of the future. To give you a little bit more detail, so that you see where we are standing.
Motion to approve. Second. I like it, of course.
Thank you, Alan. Appreciate that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion about that? All approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any approve? Disapprove, say no. Therefore, their pass? Are any of them...
We've got some, a couple of things. Just regular capital outlay, and that was for the new construction of the high school, some adjustments to the initial plan to add some, well, as it says there, we added some additional windows to some classrooms that were missing. Bollards, which are those safety barriers right there in front of the cafeteria, and then also some cabinetry and appliances in the pay slot. Those were some additional things that we had from the initial plan that we added to. And also additional revenue that came through with the Safe School Grant. And this was through the work that Freddie's had done and all the staff to bring in some more revenue, where we can provide more safety measures at the schools.
I'm looking to approve. What?
Next. We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments for the school. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
This is a better report.
Thank you.
Just want to let you know too, on the 29th of this month, we've got an open house prior to our board meeting. For the, it's going to be at the high school. We encourage all of you to come out at 5:45. We're going to have to tour through the new, of course, the meeting's going to be set up in the cafeteria, the new portion that we've already been using. But the east wing is going to be open at that time. We'll hopefully have furniture set up, and you see how that's going to be utilized. We appreciate it.
One question. Are they going to be working on that road around the back there? Getting out of there?
Yes, yes. Well, as far as, there is no more passway around, but yes, the parking lot is going to be formed in the drive-in. It's coming on the new property from the old county road property. We're going to add more route. We waited until we brought in the last load of rock and total equipment that they had or was out of. If they're going to smooth it, then we're adding more rock to it. Eventually, we're going to make it pay.
Thank you, Troy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
What did you say today?
29th of this month. It's Thursday week, Thursday after, the week after Thanksgiving. Big 5:45. The meeting's going to actually be in the new part of cafeteria, but the east wing, which is what is just getting done now, is going to be ready for tour. Thank you.
Next, for the quarterly reports and the budget amendments, we have the highway department. Jake.
Would you like to report? Do you think we need to approve any money? Do we need to draw dibs? Do we need whatever? That's February. That's on the 31st meeting.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the quarterly of the highway department. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you have any?
Do you have any detractors, Department of Justice?
No. Okay. Next, we have the reports and amendments for the trustee, Lance Rashers.
Good evening. Trustee, have I got the report? Have any questions? I have a couple comments, but I don't...
Tax collections are pretty much through the roof right now, to be honest with you.
And that was one of the things I wanted to talk to you about. If you look on, I don't have the page number of here, but it's next to the last page. At the very top, it's got paid commission account, 29900. You look at the bottom of that page, we have 2017 tax collections and the 18 on the other side. The first, 2018 is on, as of September 30th. If you'll notice, we have, of course, we don't start collecting taxes until October 1st. But if you'll notice, there's $58,577, anyone since already paid. That's because of that prepayment program that you implemented a few years ago that allowed us to take prepayments. We've already got people paying in 2019 taxes, and we just got started with 18. So that's, you know, we get a lot of positive feedback for that. I'd like to pass that on to you, since you've been one that allowed us to do that. And right under that, appreciate that, Jerry. And right over that November 8th, 2018, a little over a month later, you'll see that we've collected 53% of the taxes this year. That's pretty remarkable. I've told everybody before, that I've talked to other trustees, at this point in tax collection season, they may be 5, 9, maybe 12% collected, but nobody's 50% collected. I mean, that's only because we offer that discount. All of our mortgage companies paid during that time period, which was a real struggle this year, but you're going to hear that sad story. But if you do later, come talk to me. And the other thing I want to say, I want to mention is, the school federal projects, number 142, account 142, at the bottom of the second page. Right now, it's got a credit balance, but that's one of those accounts, that one and the 264 account, they fluctuate because of the time and deposits that we have and when the checks are written down at that account. So right now, as of September 30th, that account's in the red. But in October, we received that money from the federal government, so it's in the black now, and everything's good on that. Which didn't get published until September. Any questions?
I was going to clarify something. I was one of the commissioners, we've had a few changes that was on the committee, that was implemented.
Yes.
We did implement that, you didn't.
Well...
You were the one with the board, and the knowledge that brought it before this, and we just supported you, and it's done amazingly well, so you deserve the approval.
Well, I appreciate that. I couldn't have done it without you, though. But that's, that's one of the things that, a few of you know that I'm a member of the State Association of Trustees, and also the National Association, and we pick up things that, from other places, that we can bring back home and try to better serve the citizens. That's what it's all about, so...
That's what keeps us getting the vote by many, right?
It definitely is. There's other counties, I got some emails, this is, you know, end of September, from other counties, saying, "What are y'all doing?" Because we were in this bind a few years ago, where we weren't sure that all the checks were cleared. Barry, I think you were here some of those times?
Yeah.
When the mayor's up on these budget office, wrote the checks in September.
We had to do tax anticipation, I suppose.
And that's a thing that passed for us. I mean, we get the flow...
And there's still counties that do that.
And there's still counties that do that. And I'm serious, I got emails saying, you know, "How's that 2% going?" Because we've got to do something to correct the vibe that we're in. Their commission's spending money not crazy, and that doesn't matter, so it's, this has worked out great for us.
Good deal.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions? Was there a motion, or...
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the trustee's reports and amendments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Next, we have Shelley Fessman, going to give the county general and the solid waste report and the budget amendment.
So any questions about the quarterly reports or the budget amendments? This is for county general and fellow voters.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, say aye.
I need clarification on that. What are we approving?
County general.
County general. Okay.
Do we need to separate? We're, all right, approve for the county general, then. We have a motion and a second for the county general. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, I need another clarification. I spoke about, that's my second. Who's second there?
I don't know. All right. Also, do we have a motion for the solid waste report?
How do we approve the solid waste report?
We have a motion and a second to approve the solid waste report. All approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks. Next, we have...
Now you've got your budget amendments.
Oh, I thought that's what I did. Oh, I'm sorry. We need a motion and...
I'm looking to approve the county general on budget amendments.
We have a motion and a second on the county general and budget amendments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Nancy told me she was sorry she couldn't be able to be here today, but she says she has no, she's running behind on stuff because of the library, but she did want me to express that the library would be closed the first two weeks in December, because they're having to replace the carpet, they have a new carpet in the library. And she said she was sorry of not getting to be here. We go on. Is Ms. Emily Rushing here? I guess she is, and she was going to give us an overview of the Chester County Health Department. She's the new director there, so we'll just see what might have happened there with her later, and get her on next time. Next, we have the property maintenance code. Barry Smith, if you'd like to give a report about that.
The governmental affairs committee has met twice, October 29th and November 11th, concerning the code that we passed. We passed this code earlier this year. So we were discussing ways to enforce this code. How would we best go about it if we had Mr. Tim Planner, Department of Commerce and Insurance? Tim, Tim's not here. I was looking for him a minute ago. I was hoping he'd be here tonight to tell us a little more about what we discussed this morning. But the money that we take up for building permits, we keep $15, and the rest of it goes to the state. Might be a $400 builder permit. If we decided to keep all of the money from those building permits, we would have to establish our own building enforcement department within the county, because the state would no longer be doing it for us. They wouldn't approve unless we set up our own department. But what we can do to enforce, of course, that would be state code, that would be enforced. This property maintenance code is just for just the county. And we can hire someone or appoint someone, pay a fee, to go to different places in the county that are not up to code, and they can give those people places for warning. And then after that, they can give them citations. We can start finding them so much per day, until they comply. If anybody in the committee, if I say something wrong, y'all correct me, because I'm trying to call in a lot of this from memory. So what we decided to do is to get a person that is an electrical inspector that's going around anyway, a person that you can talk to. He's not here either.
No.
Ricky Banks. And he will be starting to do, enforce electrical services in this county, starting January 1st.
Through Stacey's office.
Through Stacey's office. Okay. We are wanting, the committee is recommending that we appoint this person to be our enforcement officer. He's agreed to do it, is that correct?
Yes.
And pay him so much, we haven't established an amount yet.
No.
Did he give you any idea what he thinks he needs?
Not yet. We really don't know how much, but just, I don't know what his fee would be. He don't know how many calls or what they would be. He has, the electrical inspector in Hardman County does it there, and he's supposed to get with us and tell us how he is paid down there, so, but he hasn't got that to me yet.
Okay.
But Mr. Planner said that we could go ahead and put it in force and to use him, and as long as the Ricky Watkins, the inspector in Hardman County that is already fully accredited and all with it, and they work together and enforce it, until we get, we have, the county has to apply for an exempt status before we can receive all the building permit money to us, instead of it going to the state, which Mr. Planner was going to be here, and he says that's no problem. That was one of the choices when we started, and we decided, I mean, the commission decided to vet the state handling. And he's just saying, all we ended up doing is paperwork, he said, and we can be doing as long as we have our department and official to enforce it.
Yeah. So the committee is recommending to the commission to approve this person, Ricky, to be our maintenance code officer, MCO. We are MCO, and to go around and start telling people they're going to have to comply with our property maintenance code. And we didn't, I hope we would have a figure tonight to present that we would pay it as a way of fee, but I guess we can establish that for...
Well, if we had to call another special call meeting or something to, that would have to be set, correct, Marty?
Correct.
That amount would have to be set, and I would have to vote on that, which, that's what we hadn't got, but I mean, if you could go on and...
Can the commission authorize the committee to...
That would be good, if the commission could authorize the committee to, can you do that with the money?
The money? Stacey gives for the building permits, and that's amounting to a few thousand dollars a year right now.
About $6,000 a year. Building numbers are down right now. Ricky Banks is already the electric inspector of Forchester and Madison County, and he'd be doing the building permit inspections as well. There's still not enough money there. There's going to be some more money from somewhere.
But he will tell.
I've said all along, this is never going to be done and done right until we have our own person doing it. So I make the motion that we accept the recommendation of the governmental affairs committee and give them the authority to negotiate a fair and reasonable fee to pay Mr. Ricky Banks.
We did say, Barry, that we would just have a fee for each time that he was there, until we know how many times or how much he's...
Yeah, we were going to work through this and establish, we thought, fees, and as a few months, we would know kind of how this was working. But we also thought that the first few months after that, after people start being fined, because we're going to have revenue to fine if this goes correctly, or, you know, we'll have lien in these properties or whatever, that we would be able to, it would be less, because people would clean up things, because they don't want to be cited, hopefully.
So it was $50, once they were given the action, it'd be $50 a day if they would be fined unless they can...
That's right. We could, we could...
That...
Something like 80, $50 aside, 80, $50 call or something like that.
Is that going to be a county court? Judge has to rule of the fine, if you...
No, it's stated on the, it's stated on the sheet the code official would give the property owner. It's stated on there, the amount that he would be charged if he's not in compliance, but it also leaves up to the code official, the amount of time it gives him to clean up before he starts being fined, and he comes back and checks it. So they'd have to sign it and know it all, but the code official would be, he wanted to check it.
What'd be filed when they don't pay the bounty?
Well, then it's turned in to the court, right?
Would that be general session? Okay.
So to restate your motion, Tim, you made the motion to authorize the governmental affairs committee to negotiate money, whether fee or salary, with potential employee Ricky Banks at the, at the...
Maintenance code official.
That's what I said. Maybe it's not better what I said.
So we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes.
Okay. We have the potential to spend any money there. I think we should do a roll call vote.
Okay. Let's have a roll call.
All right, Johnny Garner.
Yes.
Jerry Low.
Yeah.
Larry Blackstock.
Yeah.
Al McKinnon.
Yes.
Amber Holland.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yeah.
Sandra Hyres.
Yes.
Joseph Malera.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Tim Crow.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Mike Algen.
Yes.
John Wells.
Yes.
Todd Lewis.
Yes.
16-4.
I've got a question now, Barry. Do we need a motion to file and get that money back to the state and Chester County? Why, how are we going to do that?
He said when we fill out the exemption papers and all that we had to file to get the county, I believe it starts when you file the papers.
Well, I was going to have to vote for approve at the end. Government approve is still the state?
Well, the money that's going to the state, if we try to keep that money, we'll have to establish a code office, not a maintenance code office, but a state property code office within Chester County. And that, we didn't want to go, am I saying that right, Marty?
You are, it's the difference between enforcing the county code and the state statutes. And you've got some other hoops to jump through before you're in a position to enforce the state statute, et cetera.
But we may not have the one to do that. We didn't, the committee didn't think, the committee was going to do this, it's portionized right now, and we see...
We talked about the other night, get that money back to the state, the committee?
We did.
We definitely did.
Yeah.
Because a $15, they're going to pay nobody.
Yeah.
But you want us to go ahead and have...
Whatever, let the county carry. Does he think we should now, or do we wait until we get approved?
Well, you have to have some other things in place before you can do that. I think that's the issue, so my suggestion to you would be evaluate these other things you have to have in place, because you're not yet ready to start enforcing it, to choose them. Okay. That's right. This code will cover any violation, no matter what occurs, anything that's not meet the code today.
Johnny, if he goes out to a piece of property today and it doesn't meet the code, he can give them a side name, or this, we actually had it sent before, I was looking at it just a minute ago, notice the violation order. We give them a sign, they have so many days to clean up the property.
That's your card, one in January.
That's, that's what we're, we're asking us to do, release the, the January cards. If we need to put this in practice where everybody can clean up their property and be ready.
Yeah, because it's somebody...
So we're going to file it for the January 3rd, but it can be something that happens a year to go about.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
And he would, what we had asked Mr. Planner, and he was finding out for us, was on things that had already happened in the past. He was finding out the correct way to handle it, where we wouldn't have troubles. And he was finding the correct way to handle it, I guess it'd be the best way to say it, right, Marty?
Yeah, that pertains to some state statutes, that would...
Okay, you...
...to the property.
Okay.
Stacey, does my motion need to reply? Start the January 3rd, or we do it on...
Well, our code is already in effect.
Okay.
I think the issue about the start date is where the code's been in effect, so you're not voting to have the code in effect. You're voting to have an official start the work to enforce the code.
And what, before, reading that kept delaying, because we didn't have a really a department or an official, because if we, we, like before, the one really been enforcement had been, what we've had to has been black. And he really, we need to have our own, and it states in there that you have your own official that does it, and that's what we didn't have. So we will have this, we approve it, and we can go forward and maybe get... The reason I was trying to add, or asking to add all the building permits and all in there, is to, first, because we haven't budgeted for it, and this would be another source of partial pay in his income, if we can get all that worked into one department. So we need to start with him.
We need to call another meeting, governmental affairs committee.
Yes, sir. And if the commission allows the governmental affairs, then we can agree.
We talked about that, right? The state?
I think the goal is to... This person, do we all in favor of the state?
Eventually. Like, right now, they give, they have a year training program that you can, and he is willing to work with that and work, that's what, the inspector in Hardman County, the Watkins, he's already qualified in all of them. And Banks isn't qualified in the building permits yet, as long as he works with Watkins. But we're not doing that right now, anyway. We're just trying to get the property maintenance. And we'll work on that in the future. So we have a motion, you want to...
We have, we're back.
We did?
Yeah.
All right, so we've done, have we had enough discussion, or does anybody else need to...
We need the roll call, we're good.
All right.
I'm going to make a clarification about that, what you guys don't talk.
Well, I was going to speak with the Watkins, the inspector in Hardman County, to see, because we're only having him in, going to be doing the property maintenance right now, what the charge on that would be, which, see, he does them all, so he don't, he gets a certain amount on the electrical and in a certain amount on the building, but the It's not necessarily the same thing each time. So that's what we got to decide and when we speak to him for what he will be working and making a decision for. But he will be making the decision because he will be the official for the county on the maintenance program. And we, we just need to, when we find out more of how he needs to be paid, that's what we bring in front of the committee. So, any other discussion? All right, we'll go on to the, uh, update on the ambulance building. Jerry, would you like to?
Uh, we'd like to go in the middle place, please, and, uh, I hope to get them to be here tonight, because I tell the folks, the police.
We're still waiting on their plans to, where we can put it out to bid. All right, now, Ms. Hyers, if you would like to give, we had a bid opening today and Ms. Hyers would give us the update on the public safety?
I'll try to, uh, because we only had one bid and it was like about forty to four thousand dollars or more than the bid that we got in the spring. Now, there we walked through, uh, the public safety building today and they cut the bid by, I think he said, um, I'm trying to?
Forty, forty six thousand.
How much did he cut the bid?
He, he cut it from?
It was mainly for, um, what?
The, the extra that he had on there than what the other ones had estimated was of labor. And the difference of the labor was to keep heat only in the building while they was doing the work. They would have to, he mentioned that he would have to hook up a unit and to keep heat in there and he then turn around and redo it to work on it again to keep heat on the building all the time. So he said he could reduce his price a whole lot if he could just tear it all out and they would be out of heat for two to three weeks and then come back and put it all in. And I spoke with everyone in the building and they was willing, because they've had problems with it for years, they was willing to suffer through the two to three weeks if we could get it fixed. And he come back with, uh, a lot more price.
Hundred sixty, well, I don't know what the labor was, but the total bid is one hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars and seven hundred and twelve.
That was the installation cost and the engineering fees together.
So the question is, since we only have one bid, is whether or not we want to go ahead with this since we've had no other bids? Or whether we want to wait and try to get another bid? Which might lead to that the cost go up or, or we don't know. They could do it in December.
Yes, they said they could have it done in the month of December. Where the other bid we got was in May of this year and this bid coming in now and lots of cost had went up and tariffs has went up and metals went up and the cook, cog and engineering firm said that it has all been up and it is, he expected it to be more than we, but he didn't know about that much. But when he said, when we gave him the option that he could have the whole building and do it all, he brought it down forty six thousand dollars. So, uh, his cost is a hundred and forty eight thousand and with the, uh, cook, cog and the engineering and the administrative fee and the permits and all that, the total would be a hundred and sixty eight thousand where we was, it said in mind between a hundred and thirty four and a hundred and fifty in ours. So, but a hundred and thirty four was approved to start with. So?
So the question is whether or not we want to go ahead with the bid we have, or if we want to wait and try to get another bid, that might be how.
Yeah, and he said that their bid, even if we didn't want to do it now, their bid would be good for sixty days, but it wouldn't be guaranteed they'd have it done in a length of time, but if you get way into the winter, it might not, it might take longer. But as long as, you know, the difference is thirty three thousand dollars over what we was expecting.
Is that for five units?
Yes, that's for the total of what the, the twenty five ton in the building and the five, I think it's five, five ton units.
Okay, if he done it in December, how, did he say it would take him three weeks?
Yes. He said it'd be done in the month of December.
Would he work through the holidays or?
He must be, yes.
That would be too bad if he did that, anything out there, a lot except for nine eleven people.
Yeah, they all said that they'd be willing to work with heaters because they wanted, they was, they, well, Ms. Patricia, uh, said they would be willing to.
It's got to be fixed. Barry?
Yes.
The engineers told us morning, you know, that this, uh, hundred and thirty four pounds or something, what started out, and they said they had already had it, fifteen pounds, things to go up on material and fifteen pounds on labor, that was included in the hundred and thirty four pounds?
Yes, and well, he shows it all in his?
Or something, that's just, lost too much money.
He, he shows it in their estimate, I think y'all must've got it when y'all approved it in May. I've got a copy here. Ms. Sandra has it, this, the form, uh, Ms. Sandra, I didn't keep it off, we didn't know, she would make copies for everybody, I guess, I'm sorry.
But, uh? I'll say this, for Upchurch, we, I have dealt with them, uh, replacing a lot of heaters in the building, the highest county that I work with. Upchurch has usually been the lowest or best bid with them. And my maintenance guys much would rather work with them than some of the others. Just saying that, that's just to let you know about the company. Their main bid, I don't know if they gave us as good a deal as, but they, they've been very prepared, just to let you know.
Where I'm?
It's, it's just a gamble, you know, see, if you put it off and save money or you put it off costly, I just know, I just know it's never been right and it's, it's, it's completely horrible to be working that field and always has been.
Larry Cox wants to do it, but he doesn't.
He was the one that gave the estimate.
Okay. I thought this was Upchurch.
It is, he works for Upchurch.
Or them, or this one that's actually doing the charging.
Yeah. So this would still be coming out of the CD, I guess, while, so I need to get that recommendation.
I don't know, but, but, but?
We didn't have a recommendation because he was discussing with him about cutting the labor cost.
He went back and figured, because the first cost he gave was? A hundred and ninety four thousand.
Did he go down to what?
He got his part down to a hundred and forty eight thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars.
One sixty seven.
One sixty seven, seven twelve.
I'd say you would go with eight, but if you wait, check your days and the metal comes up.
That's right, that's what I'm saying, it's a chance, I don't know.
Does this function today or?
Well, I, I could let you, Ms. Lefter, would you wanted to talk about how the units is working today?
I could probably say about as much as the sheriff had could because he was in that building for several years. Um, the heat blows at one speed, um, it's either full blast or nothing, the same way as the air in the summer, it's full blast or nothing. So a lot of us prefer the heat to be off so we can do space heaters. Um, but that's how we are, dispatches closed up, they have to have, because of security purposes, they have to have their doors shut so that we don't have random strangers off the street walk in there. And with the equipment and everything in there and you have the heat that's running full blast in there, um, it, they're running at probably about ninety three to ninety five degrees in there, three hours, three shifts. So it is very hot on the dispatchers that are working in there.
And, and they are required to shut the doors on second and third shift, right?
Yes, and they need to on first shift because we, it is open to the public, there are public restrooms in there, so.
I think Ralph can give you a good description of it over the years, he's much trouble he's had trying to work it, make it go, and tell you how he finishes it, but it's to do that and, and you'll see us at times shut the doors open and then the next time you'll freeze it in. So it's a bearable, they tried working on this thing for thirty years plus. And, uh, it, it's physical downstairs, I've worked downstairs and it's almost the same upstairs, we do have a label up it all the way to.
Is one specific bid going to fix the problem, that's my question? Is that going to cure our problem?
It's supposed to.
They guarantee that?
Supposed to.
Supposed to.
Well, all the studies they did and all that, it's supposed to, that's all I know.
But no guarantee?
Well, that system won't be any different after, after they?
Yeah, after they tear out all that system, it's just going to be on five central units, five, five times central units. It's all five of them would have to go down.
Should be some cost savings. Tempting should change.
It's not that, as far as I'm concerned, it's not that we don't want to fix it. I just don't give thirty, forty thousand dollars more than they take fixing. I know it's going to be a bit, it's not a small.
Guess this is one we need to close. Because the one that works in the building probably most used it. So?
Well, how likely are we to get another bid?
Uh, we'd have to wait the sixty days, we'd have to redo it and reapply and put, do all the bid process again.
Your question, that's probably simple.
Yes. So, then you take a chance whether if it could be more or it might be less.
Why would we have to wait sixty days?
Well, the, the contracts are for sixty days. I mean, the bid process, isn't that what you were just?
Uh, we might check all those bids, we could simply ask for more bids.
Well, I think you, you couldn't ask for the same bid on the same project, you'd have to change something up, ain't that correct?
I think if you reject the bid, it's a little?
Okay.
I make the motion that we go with the bid we have.
Second.
Well, we have a motion to go with the bid, I think we probably need to do a roll call.
Johnny Garner?
Is this supposed to fix it, we're done, wash your hands, right?
Supposed to.
For a hundred and nine hundred?
There'd be a total of one sixty seven, seven twelve.
And the hundreds don't come off the edge as fair?
Money to come from CD, we need to stake that.
Yes, we need to stake that.
Of course, you want CD.
Money will, in, in that motion, the money will come from the CD?
We thought we don't have that.
To Marty, bro.
Yes, right, so we can come with that.
Yes.
Jerry Low?
No.
Larry Blackstock?
No.
Al McKinnon?
We got a picture, yeah.
Amber Holland?
Yes.
Jackie Butler?
Anne Moore?
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins?
Yes.
Russell Blake?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Sandra Hyers?
Yes.
Joseph Malaro? Barry Smith?
No.
Tim Crow?
Yes.
Diane Jordan? Mike Gallo-Jenner?
Yes.
John Wells?
Yes.
Todd Lewis?
Yes.
All right, thirteen four, Reggins, motion carries.
Motion carries. All right. Next on the agenda is the update on broadband into the rural areas. I've been working with, uh, he was the president and CEO of Aeneas and he became sick and I wondered why he wasn't getting back with me. He, he died last week. And I had another man contact me, which he became the president and the CEO, and we got together and talked and we filled out a grant. We're asking for the consideration for broadband grant to the Department of Economic and Commerce Development with Aeneas being the, uh?
Provider.
Provider. So that's just an update, now I don't know when this will be come, we've just applied for it and hope we can get it where we can get more, uh, broadband spread to the county.
Fair, will they be erecting towers or?
Well, there will be, uh, using the fiber optic build out, usually they come off the Southwest Coles.
Okay, so they'll, they'll run the lab?
Yes. Now, also, I had talked with Southwest about it and he said things has changed, they have a new president of the Southwest Electric and he gives me, from what he's, he's not really telling me, but I think they might eventually be interested in it too. He said they're so, I told him we needed it bad in the county and he said for the future, he, he would be back with me, so I'd like to do that. So, I, that's just an update. On other business before the commission, I have, um, to comply with the codes, we need to appoint a records committee. We need to approve the, uh, records committee, which is Andrea Holland, which is the chair, Judge Larry McKenzie, the genealogist Sandra Kelly, Stacy Smith, the county court clerk, Doris Etheridge, the register, and James Bright is the historian. We need to, uh, approve these for that committee.
Motion. Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Um, also, we have to approve the nine one one board and, uh, Kim, do you want to express about that?
I serve as chairman of the nine one one board, Blair serves as vice chairman, we have three people that's coming up for reappointment, which by statute, Blair makes recognition committee approve. We've talked to these people, they are all willing to continue to serve to be, Henderson Fire Chief Lynn Bryant, County Road Supervisor Jerry King, and then a CD appointee, which is Bill Moore, which has extensive background with AT&T, these are all excellent board members, we've talked to them, they all want to stay, so we are asking the mayor, the coroner of the commission's board. And by motion, we approve this.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the nine one one board, all approve, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, also, we have, in the other business, we have a ongoing problem, which I'd like the sheriff, if he would, to comment about this.
We have a problem here in this building with the sewer and we had, since we've been in, I, I know Mr. Blackstock is on that, it's been discussed since the building, the sewer goes out on, on the east end of the building and there's a pit and it's supposed to be a grinder, but the end grinder was denied during the building process. And we've just dealt with it, Ralph has dealt with it. And we've just dealt with the graphics, dealt with it. Pretty bad, we, we had time where it wouldn't mess up, but it's been pretty, pretty bad. What happens is the inmates flush things down the corners and it gets into the city's grinding system and it ruins our grinds. And that's the point that that we, it, it brings more weight at bay. And that is pretty costly, I, I don't know, Ralph had a topic for me, uh, it's been in working twenty five hundred dollars a time to five, six thousand dollars. About the time it was, uh, the ground up three or four this year. And that's the point that, um, that they're demanding we do something now, like, because they had to come out of the weekend and everything else to, to fix. A problem that we're going, we don't know exactly what we're going, what we have to do for the work of the city there.
We break it.
And, and, uh, and may, and, and various and, and all of, and, and like I said, this won't, we don't want to do this, we're back to something and it's not going to be, it's not going to be that cheap, I don't know, we don't have the clue of what we're going. Why do we not do it right for this, I don't know that, um, and we still do it? Well, you can, but now the city does, it's a different system where, um, it basically takes all the solids out and puts it in a container and it's taken to the land.
It's a, it's different than a pump, it's like a screened area, which it has a pump which lift it, lifts it up and puts it in a container.
That and the solids.
I guess what they flush the tiles.
Well, they flushed everything in the world, they, they flushed, they flushed the humans, we didn't have them through, we did. And we're telling them all, they flushed tiles and then, and they've been flushing, the last ones, they was flushing their commissary and packets. So we took the commissary from, um, like, of their inmates and they back there, two, they back there two or three years.
I can play it out.
I like it, I, I understand you something, like, we know we talked for a bit more, plus or something, that's all.
But what do you need to market it?
We have to, we're working there. We probably, we're trying to, we're trying to, we'll have to come back now or he will or something, come back and discuss the recommendations to the city, can they talk about grinders, grinders going to be sixty thousand dollars. Now this, this deal we're talking about now, I believe, might as well get it, uh, that's the same thing, Hardman County does.
Is that not right, Frank?
And, um, I don't really understand if it's something that's in the problem, that pit and it, and it basically is keep the solids and the bales in there compacted and puts in the container. And, and supposedly, of course, we, I had been able to talk to Ben and Art, but supposedly it's land feels safe. I don't really understand that, but that's what this, uh, that's what engineers do. Um, and that stops regardless, as we, you know, six, five, six, three, like, um, they, they've been dealing with as much as we have them up. And, and we tried everything, we was trying, we've got a thing, it's still strangled there, man, and it, and Ralph had, like, and, and he still have it hanging off. So, uh, it, it's definitely a problem, it would last dealing in, in the system. With light, I just thought about it, to bring it to God's attention that, that we're talking and, and something has to be done. We would, we would let you know something, we can get some process together or get a bid together or something. Figure out what, that's, that's right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Barry. Well, is there any other business to come before the commission? If so, you want to charge the district?
Yes, sir, we have several. Ms. Sonia Labois, Rhonda Button, Selena, I'm sorry, Sheila Eckert, Mamie Hughes, Kristy Yarborough, Berling Faulner, Ricky Catlin, Nikki Do, Lualu Tomlin, Brittany Fletcher, that's it. I'll start the bottom real first. Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, I thank you. That should be it, we have a motion.
Make a motion, Mr. Allen.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.